What?
Yeah.
I saw about there everybody.
Let's call the meeting to order. It's a continuation meeting, so we don't have any public comments this evening. Matt and Chester took all our comments from the last meeting. And I believe this is the document that the two of you collaborated between, is that right?
It is.
Okay. Are there any major changes when we're back?
The only thing you'll notice is on page two, we added to the definition of loud, unnecessary disturbing noise. About halfway through the definitions, it said, "Any noise intentionally created which because of its volume, level, duration." We decided to add the word intentionally and then legally define it over in the comment Everything else was pretty much Chester's fault, not the legal end of it. And then on 16007, on page three, the exemption, I talked with, um, thank you, Robby, and added a number of letter B, noise resulting from the normal maintenance and operations of the presidential department. We decided to use a better term, more, more, more. C was in the last one, and noise resulting from agricultural or agricultural operations on property classified, on site farms, attack property. Um, we did have a discussion a minute ago, Joe and I did, about maybe putting a period after operations, striking the rest, Chester, was that something?
Did we put the period where?
After agricultural operations, after agricultural and agricultural operations. The reason being, there are farms in the county, farmland, that's not listed under the president's evaluation, but are being farmed.
I don't see a problem with that substantive change of just shortening that to 5 percent at all. In fact, I think it brings clarity.
So we're going to strike on property classifieds? All right. Just want to go around the table and kind of get everyone's feelings for where we're at. John, I'll start with you.
Okay. I guess the questions I have is, it's been a recommendation of sheriff to focus on a time element to this ordinance. It's not in here. And there's nothing in here about the officer's discretion. There's nothing in here about warning, the first offense being a warning. And then, I'm sort of confused what the purpose of the injunctions of this after the exemptions, and then we go back to the injunctions. So I think, in my opinion, this is a, it's too much, or too broad as a ordinance, that I like.
Okay. I think the last meeting, we discussed the 24 hours versus 11:07, whatnot, was a consensus of the board to deem it as a 24 hour.
I thought it all went back to the actual word that we were going to use, whether or not it was a, well, I mean, I guess, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Chester, did we have at one time, a warning thing in there?
I think we had at one time talked about a warning. I think that the concern I have with a warning is, to some degree, I think you want to give law enforcement as much latitude as you possibly can to enforce or not enforce. I think Robbie's here, and I think he can address the fact that they're going to use discretion as to whether or not they're going to prosecute under this ordinance.
It's no different than now, if I catch you for speeding, doesn't mean I have to write you a ticket for speeding, I can give you a warning.
But I don't want to hamstring him either. I don't want to get into situations, well, is a warning that occurred in February, is that a good warning for something that occurs later in August? Is that, you know, is it a good warning for two years from now? I just think it's a mistake to get into that situation. You know, you've got a, you've got a law enforcement officer there who's trained to do a job, and I suspect this would probably be on what, this would probably go down as one of the offenses that they would probably least enjoy being involved in prosecuting. It's just not going to be a fun thing to be involved in, and my thought is, is if they can go out there and handle it informally, that's what they will do.
Our goal, our goal, the way I see it, is to not have it into the court system, but have us something with teeth, that when we go out to deal with a person, we can say, listen, we can do it one of two ways, we can either stop, and she can stop driving us crazy, and we can stop making a noise, and you know, you do it, you do it, and I would, if the shoe was on the other foot, I'd be driving her crazy. But at least we would have something to go back to that individual and say, okay, this is it. This is your final warning, fix it, stop doing it, or the next trip out here, we're going to arrest you, we're going to cite you for it. And I think it's going to resolve a lot of our problems.
I agree with that. One reason why we talked about having a warning, real identity ordinance, which you may be saying isn't necessary, is that we felt like if they had received a warning and then continued, that that would prove intentional.
It's already going to happen, because if an officer goes out there, it's just like right now in domestic trespassing and stuff, we end up radioing back to our dispatch and asking them to log into the system that Joe Blow has been ordered to stay off of this property, and it's a forever in the system, and it shows the date, the time, the officer that made that call.
So it wouldn't do you a bit of good if we had something in here that said, you know, that a warning, if you persevered after a warning that's intentional?
Doesn't make a difference, all it does is tie our, all it does is tie our hands and keep us from writing a ticket to arrest you, because they didn't get a warning. But I'm good with that, I don't have issue with that. And the warning, I don't have issue with. I mean, that's, that's a lawyer's job, is to come up with the, the word that stands up in court or not. So you can skip me when it comes to that kind of thing.
Back to habitual.
I think this is a product of the pretty lengthy conversations we've had around this table, and I don't have any, any heartburn over any of the provisions.
The only question under exemptions, jetties, firearms, how are we going to define that? If I go out this afternoon and practice my shooting at a target, I agree that's a lawful and safe manner. Time out there at, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning, shooting 50 or 100 rounds, I'm not sure that serves any constructive purpose, how are you going to manage that?
If it's a lawful manner, there's nothing we can do about it.
As it's written right now.
Well, is that, is that an issue? I mean, that's, that's the thing, is it?
So the question, I think, is it illegal to go shoot at midnight?
No.
Illegal?
Illegal for me to play my stereo, though, at property lines pointing toward Carl's house right now, is gunfire, firearm something we need to speak to? You can do it.
I don't think, I don't think there's anything you can do about it.
We can under the noise ordinance. If we're going to do a noise ordinance, I think we need to think about that. I, I mean, I don't know that, you know, we spent a lot of time on the discussion about the person paying the loud music, and the speakers were a long way from his house, but they were at the property line, so, you know, what's to keep the gunfire from being the next thing like that? I don't know, I guess we haven't spent much time talking about that.
Where I was looking at, Mark, I guess, is, you know, somebody on the 2038 or shooting guns, probably not an issue, if you're in a mobile home, park, or close neighborhood where you're shooting guns, I would say it could be an issue, but at that point, I guess you'd have to look at really safe shooting, that close, close to the corner.
Of course, the 2038, the rule is that the person with the music could be on a 2038 track and be playing the music, to defend the neighbor, so I mean, I just throw that out, I don't know if we need to do anything about it, but I think it's something we need to have thought about.
Is it illegal to, uh, discharge a firearm 1,000 feet? Is that, is that the law?
On your own property.
Okay, so there's not a restriction on, okay.
No restriction, if you were firing unsafe off your property, that would be an unsafe manner. Of course, you got to prove it, too, got to basically be there when they do the shooting.
Look back what Mr. Sheriff was talking about, you mentioned one time, you put a time element in here, 11:07, you might get stepped out, the shooting 2 o'clock in the morning, I think that's.
The way we've done it, firearm, basically.
It wouldn't matter if you put a time on it or not, if you have an exempt.
I think you come down to what is the.
Unless you exempt them only during that certain time, during the daylight.
So if a guy crosses over and tries to come and shoots it out, 3 o'clock in the morning.
Well, that's on one shot.
That's not sustainable.
That's not a legal right.
Yeah, so how many rounds?
I don't know.
10?
10? I don't know. Wake me up.
Best of your recollections, how many calls have you had that were in line for all from firearm being destroyed?
Honestly, I couldn't tell you a number, it's, it's not very many.
There have been, we have some, yeah. Especially if it's 4th of July or New Year's.
Well, I think we talked about holiday, holidays, resulting.
Well, I think if you're earmarking this door, they will find an avenue to disrupt your sleep, what it may be, and if they can do that through a firearm, because you knocked out the, the loud noise, as far as an audio thing like that, they can do the same with that firearm.
Yeah, I think Gary's exactly right, I think you've got, and I think that's something we sort of talked a little bit about at the last meeting, we talked about the fact that we were going to start with something and see if it addressed the concerns that you had, rather than getting overbroad, but with the understanding that if you continue to have problems, you can certainly amend this ordinance.
Well, often if we just didn't exempt firearms, but that would only be, that would only be a problem if it was something, you know, somebody reported that was being done in a sustained manner, would that be a problem, Robbie?
Say that again?
If firearms were not exempted, and you got a call, and somebody was just out doing normal shooting, then you wouldn't.
If we exempted it, then what would happen is, we'd have a bunch of people calling us because of people shooting guns and saying, it's part of the ordinance, and we want you to do something about it, and I voted for you, I want you to do your job, that's exactly what would happen.
On your point, would it be better for it not to be exempted, then?
No, I think, I think it would be better to be exempted, and if it continues to be a problem, then you guys revisit that later.
I did you two ask that same word, habitual? I know, my life talks.
You got my issues all along, having spoken to the board. You know, firearms, I think, during daylight hours, if somebody's shooting guns at 2 o'clock in the morning, that might be a reason to call the police, just to be quite honest with you, you know, if you're out shooting a raccoon out of the tree, most of the time, that's not going to raise a question, or if you're in subdivision, and somebody goes off and shooting it.
That's what I'm saying.
Somebody starts shooting, I feel like it's my, Sheriff's Department.
They look out the door, you, you go in.
Something's happened, actually, somebody broke in, defeated my salesperson.
I'd say habitual, very cousins of, in those words. Susan?
I have concerns about the warning, but that's been answered, and my only other reaction to all of that's been answered. The only other question I had was about the inclusion, we don't seem to have sustained habitual in our definitions, do we?
I think what we have is, we're defining it as noise intentionally created which, because of its volume, level, duration, and/or character, a noise disturbs injuries or endangers the company's health, the peace, safety, the reasonable person, the ordinary sensibilities in the county.
So I guess duration would probably sustain the, yeah, so that, that was my, that was something, I did think that was part of the topic, and we were trying to get it out of the matter, I'm just so happy, I'm happy as ever.
My only thing would be the firearm thing, but I think, though, like Joe said, the lawful and safe, I think if you're doing something otherwise, those two words would make you noninformed.
Mr. President?
I don't think it was good for me, the only question I got was from others here, when they came forward, would they be their activities on the weekend be protected under eyes, under exemption?
Would that should be, the way I look at it is under A, necessary noise from the normal legal operations, community and local operations, foreign operations, or nonprofit organizations, and I said y'all are nonprofit, so.
And I, I agree, that and I.
And then I would also back that up with, anytime they're doing fundraiser events or stuff like that. So y'all are, I think, for example.
Mr. Shields, anything you'd like to add?
Good job. Appreciate you having me, you put your butt into it.
As far as the nonprofit exemption, is there any kind of paperwork that we would need to submit to the county to back up, um, area, you know, for?
No, I think it would become an issue, you said you were nonprofit, it's an issue the sheriff has to resolve it personally, you know, how would that work?
I didn't know if we need to submit, you know, proof of our nonprofit. Are y'all incorporated? Yes. You're incorporated, and it's a nonprofit corporation, right?
And it's a public event, you have it open to the public.
Yeah, it's, your cover, probably going to be my, your own.
And we don't ship firearms from the airplane.
You don't, you don't.
No, not from the plane.
Well, we had close to 10 or 12 hours of discussion, trying to get this document put together, and we managed to do it pretty quickly, I think, training some meetings in here, to support. I don't have much to add, I think, I think we've covered all the bases, I think we've done the best we can with what we have, and we'll try to do something to help, help the sheriff out, and help people with D and D out, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, agree to adopt this ordinance as noted in the changes on 16007, C.
Do you have a second for that? I'll set it. More discussion? All paper? All right. Mr. Shields, I think this is yours now, go get it.
I think it was seven or eight to one.
Well, my top guarantee, Shields, this was, we'll deny it, so. No, we will present it next, to pass the joint, so you can take it back tonight, tell them it's been spread out.
So you meant if it passed tonight, you meant to pass by this?
Basically, it's a recommendation.
Keep in mind, this is a recommendation from the board, on board commissioners, like was for the public, so this document could never come to fruition, it could be completely different than what this board had recommended.
It has lots of times.
Yes, I want to round by multiple to ten, so, thank you all for all your efforts. Our next task, I think, is, listen, planning, ideas, board, actually.
Two minutes before we go down, yeah, just going to be at the, everybody.
Gary, I think that's, for that matter, how close are we on time? You go back to office? You want to make that one change, just email it to me, and I'll bring Gary to office. We have another 130 minutes here.
How many you need?
Right there, sit up. We're going to get to the commission.
I marked my ass, Robbie.
We marked that one.
They're smart guys, telling us they need county money.
If I can't just try to get one, I'm still, I'm telling them, of course, you'll definitely.
James.
Hey! I just tell them in the morning.
I think that's, yeah.
Planning related discussions, future discussions, Joe, you have anything that the board are talking about, the way you planned?
I don't know what to talk about.
Susan?
I think this board should look at corridor development plan.
What was that word?
Corridor development plan, all aspects corridor development, and I think this board should look at a study on the impacts of fracking on the engine. And a smaller thing, but I would like to see it look at someday, would be lighting ordinance, it's sometimes called dark skies, but where lighting, the shield, is to be dealt with facing.
The utility, moving in that direction.
It would be nice if you could encourage.
But, you know, they're not going to take them, or put up five years.
No, I mean, this could, people, it could be grandfathered, but we talked about this five years ago, we passed it five years ago, we have a lot of shielded lighting now.
You're talking like a Walmart parking lot, something.
I'm talking about, damn, people across the river from me, who'd like to shoot out their lights at 24, all it needs is a real shield.
You and I talk about commercials, don't you? At what hour can they be cheated? And you only shoot once, once a week? Yeah, it's not, if they're not hungry, is it? There was a squirrel riding in line, was that right?
Awesome!
John, you have any thoughts or future discussion for this board?
No, I am going to be replaced, so, or I'm asked to be replaced, so, I, I signed up to go through this point, so I won't make any recommendations.
Take the effort.
Thank you.
You signed up to, you had to the noise ordinance?
I signed up to get through this.
The noise ordinance?
Yes.
John Seif was up.
My seat was up, and I asked not to be reappointed. I'm, I serve for the town.
You had a problem up in town with noise?
No, 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 they just asked if I would stay through until this got passed.
Town of Ireland is a representative of the state board.
I'm not county appointed, I'm appointed through the town, like.
Specifically, nothing, generally, I would say, that plan would need to keep in mind what, what their charter is, and whatever we need, needs to, to be done with that in mind. I think, generally, the things that I would like to see us look at, are things that have a economic impact on our county, not this currently, but moving forward, and I think some of the things that's been, prior have, have, make that criteria my mind, it has, I think, I think, you know, a big part of our planning needs to have that.
Be looking at that in the future?
The only thing that I was listening, was a, usually a Knox box ordinance, do we have? If anybody doesn't know what a Knox box is, that's a, that's for fire departments, every fire department that sends you to the ordinance would be a new business or something to build, you know, something like a, a public or something, comes in, out of the county, that would require them to have a box, the front door, for the front entrance, and then that fire department would have a key to go, to open the door and go in if no one's in the building or something, and each fire department would have their own key for their fire district, because no other fire departments could go to other districts, open locks, every security, fire departments have to be bonded, it's something that's, we see quite often, we see more in the, the Knox boxes now, in the, in the town, in place, we have a key in front of them for, number different places, so.
Schools, you still have, how do you have that, that's a school?
We have, we have a box at school, where they're able to do a swipe card, every officer has one.
Yeah, this would be, essentially be, if, like, officers have the swipe card, fire department had a key, somewhere, in the building, the fire was going on, 3:00 in the school, let's get that one, yeah, you check it out, without having to call and wait on somebody and swipe it, but, well, no.
Now, what would be the type of key versus a swipe card?
The key's just bonded, you just got to put one, the lock, that's where the business at.
They did the swipe card to save money, for, like, if any of the schools, any officer of the fire department gets called to one of the schools, any officer could, will be responding to it, and they can get in.
The, in the Knox box, you could have a key, a swipe key in there, so when the fire department opened it up, they could have that, then swipe it, go in, check the fire alarm or whatever.
Then key active.
So it's basically access to the fire department.
What worry do you, or?
One of the issues with the access control is, it was designed to control the main entry and exit. When Robbie gets a call, something going on in the school, he doesn't necessarily want to go in the front door, if the building's on fire, he doesn't necessarily want to go in the front door, so that Knox box gives you that, a key, that you can then assume the front building's on fire, and you get to the box, then you get the key to go around the back, and, you know, because it's, we're key, it's supposed to be the key designed, so.
It's another task, but, you know, not as much damage, you know, it'll happen, plus a one door out, if they need to, you know, they can just open the door, let it go over here or something, so there's a lot, plus the.
What about businesses that have the more sophisticated security systems, I mean, I was thinking about banks and things like that, how would you use that? I guess you had a fire, and you'd still just go in, let the alarm go off.
Yeah, you get it, the alarm's already going off.
When you got the sheriff with you, ready, on fire.
Well, we even got the alarm, but the bank.
But, but they, they're issued codes, they're supposed to issue codes as well, if they're able to disarm, a lot of times, on 911 register, they'll have for, you know, national communications, when you go in, you know, you can disarm with code 1234, and then that ties it, my, too, the authority that you issued code to.
John?
I guess, regulations and, and creating private sector jobs, and be my, and how we can retain private sector jobs, would be, I guess, on top of my list, I think, with all the loss of jobs and stuff in this county, people are going to be hurting, and it looks like making county's going to be a small business county, and we need to be and it looks like Macon County's gonna be a small business, uh, county, and we need to be in favor and supportive of small businesses. Try to help people.
What were you still on EDC? Can you elaborate on that, on John's comment at all?
Well, we...
I'm trying to put you on the spot.
No, the more people working on these, I think, the better. I mean, Gary may have some insight into that too, but, uh, you know, it's just a lot of town, and a lot of buildings, a lot of basically buildings, gunplay that have access to Tuesday highway, after gas, railroads, and things, you know, we're not in real position to be with, so maybe, you know, smaller businesses are where we need to focus. I mean, we focus on everything we can think of, particularly the last few years since February eighth, things really hit the wall. You know, it's kinda like the harder you work, the harder you get sometimes, with economic levels.
Do you see a difference of all the planning boards compared to EDC on economic level?
Well, yeah, it's EDC, I know the people myself, if I could see any, any group that has any insight that EDC's not in touch with, I think that'd be good, it'd be helpful to share that.
Should we look into having a collaborative meeting?
Well, do we, I think we might have one a few years ago, do you recall?
Since I've come here.
We know we, that EDC involved, we did its strategic plan, who cares?
I think we talked about it and we, but I don't think it ever happened.
Well, I think that's probably something, now that we have a direction, the county, before we even organized, you know, I think that's something Matt and Paul and Deacon could probably talk about. And we could try to work that in, maybe, you know, when you bounce beyond this, maybe we talk about this in March or some, some sort of meeting.
Dan?
Um, I agree with the, the comments that we need to look at ways to think about, you know, sound growth and development, but that also honors the rural character of the county as well as the, the natural resources we have.
I don't know that I have any, I mean, I, I'd be hoping, working on anything with commissioners, they were important, I think. But they're probably gonna take that crap, see the names, I want to talk to your community. I don't have any goals, I don't have any goals.
What did you have that would be beneficial to your departments?
Uh, talking with Jack this morning, and I thought I brought a few minutes to talk about, uh, one of my, his suggestion was review the sign ordinance about the tax we've been giving, year ago.
And we were told to stop that, right? Because of some state legislation?
Yeah.
Should we elaborate on that a little bit, settle it, resolve it at the state level? What? Didn't that work, what? Chester, can you help us with that?
I am not familiar with what, what's being...
I'm sorry. You're talking about...
I'm, I'm not, I'm not familiar with any legislative changes.
There was a moratorium on any changes to environmental regulations up through October of twenty fourteen. That expired and it was not in use.
An infometer was that, but I don't think that had any application to...
I think that's one reason why we stopped, that we stopped working on the sign ordinance, floodplain ordinance, various things because of, of that.
Floodplain ordinance, yes, the signs, not, not, I don't think that has any application.
The other thing we talked about was telecommunications, there's some real pickups and downs in the funding. And then I'd also been talking about, I kinda agree with Susan about corridor development, so looking at that situation, probably something.
And is there a way we can find out, do, do T's tend to plans are for that, so we can get an idea for how they're looking into the future, versus how we are?
And south part of the, uh, commissions, who were planning, uh, would be able to partner with us, how we think, um, any study of corridor development, I'm sure that it's been very involved in transportation issues through the rural planning.
That's a very short list. Left, top, up, corridor. I think that economic impacts, this board potentially have, working with the EDC or our own, is important. I just think when you look towards the future, start being proactive and try to maybe not be reactive.
That's a pretty good way to say that, I think.
I think it's important to give Matt and Jack the tools they need to perform their jobs every day too. The sign ordinance, sweepstakes places are popping up now, Georgia's beginning.
They got a new, new...
Green Bay County News.
Think of things that use all Thursday's that one?
It's a, it's a long story, it's called money, it's called lawsuits, lawyers, Chester could probably tell you a little bit about it.
We, we had considerably more success defending lawsuits that were brought against, uh, Macon County Sheriff than some of the folks downstate. I don't know whether their lack of success in defending those cases has emboldened those that want to do this, this type of business. So, i- is, is it the same as...
Employed within your agency to be able to testify in court, and, and you've got pending litigation that's going on, you've got judges that are ruling in favor of the poker machine industry, um, they're all represented by the poker machine industry. They're a business owner and they've got their poker machines, um, the business owners not forking out the money for their work. The, the money behind those machines is coming in by the representatives and they're representing them, so they've got the money behind them.
Mr. Welch had, had success defending, uh, the case brought against the sheriff. And that case actually got appealed, or it was decided on appeal, the appellate, the drifter appealed it, the calling correct. But so, I mean, that's all, it's all with Mr. Welch on behalf of the sheriff.
It did. I thought the, maybe I'm mistaken, I thought the legislature changed the rules a little bit and were able to disqualify some of our locals. I mean, the, I thought the major business would have had their change.
What they've done is they've changed the machines and how the winnings are done, so, so they found, lawyers found a loophole.
Yeah, I think as quickly as the legislature outlawed something, I think what you see in that industry is creative people trying to find ways to go slightly to the right or to the left of what's being prohibited. And if they can get slightly to the right or to the left, it's no longer prohibited.
I think that's what's happening.
Alright, so our next meeting is Tuesday night.
Are you gonna write out the highest status of recommendations from the board?
The list is so short, I can just kind of hand it to them, I'll see what, see where they... I mean, they might have some totally different minds, but we were just, we were instructed to try to get the list together.
Corridor development, what is that, what does it mean?
What does that have to mean?
What's that to me?
Chris doesn't really give explanation. Do it, Chris.
Like, the D O T, from my, it's my understanding that the D O T has a lot of plans for four forty-one south for improvements.
Are there some roads or...
Yeah, or maybe major roads into...
Roads is there?
Be repaired.
It's on the top, right?
Well, I think they have some, some safety issues, I think they're looking at a wide highway on some part of it, too. So the limited turnout?
That would probably be closer to Frank when the answer happens.
I don't, I don't know the details, that's why...
I don't know the visibility study all the way back.
Just for future...
It's full, it's full time.
So I'm not sure, is it...
I hear, right?
How corridor development, and whole protection, merge with D O T plans, but I think the whole thing needs to be looked at how it can, if future, how it works, if it gives use of that.
So it also involves some developments, things, and it's...
Sure, she actually might be calm.
Well, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it can go, get down to landscaping, where parking is, curb cuts, lighting, uh...
Controlling access.
Yeah, controlling access is a really big...
The D O T's probably gonna have that as their plan, I should have some.
You know, like, we're, uh, tractor supplies, you know, the ingress, egress coming out.
How far down four forty-one does the E P J go?
To the, uh...
Same thing in that area, you gotta be working closely to that. Your, your tongue's not working. EDC, um, my little experience with it, Mark can add more to it. That is a, if you be working with there, if you have a prospect that may be coming in, fewer that know the better you are, if you let the cat out of the bag, you can kiss him goodbye.
Yeah, some of them are terrible. I mean, I understand they need to be tightly about it, but sometimes some of these people take a lot farther than you allow them to go.
And we're going through some of that now, that, uh, we can't talk about situations out there, they just said, no, that's not, that's not information we want to expose, so... They tie your hands pretty quick. And you're right, that, problems with them, but they're not coming.
But is there something that could be done, planning related, by this board, that would encourage more companies to look at the county?
I think, I think another thing you, I could have a lot, is retain what we have.
Something like seventy percent of your new jobs created from the industrial industry, so that gives you an idea of, of trying to take care of serving that.
And try to help them.
It's pretty high. Your new job, or what? You need, you need to own the process, if you, if you go to any little locale.
Right.
About seventy percent, six, five, seventy percent of your new jobs are created in the industrial industry.
I, I hate to plead that we're gonna stroke the, the companies leaving here, that didn't happen that way. But I'd hate to have that on my conscience, we're gonna pay attention to them, then they have to leave, you know, that didn't happen that way. But you, you need to take care of some business that's here.
Job retention is...
Yes.
Today.
Cause sometimes we take them for granted.
Well, it's a lot easier to, you know, we've got some senior brothers and others, I think, in the candidate, and of course, like the town's just paid them too, like the Franklin T. Brooks, so... It's a lot easier to try to keep those jobs, let them expand, or just try to keep those jobs. It's gonna be difficult to, to put them to play.
This is sheer cost alone, of retaining those jobs. And, and, you know, some things you talked about earlier, we don't have a, we're not gonna get one, you can't flood it in here. Um, you know, our, our network infrastructure is not what other areas have offered.
Maybe, we may be competitive for rural areas, but not for, a lot of areas, but...
You know, I think, I think what John said earlier, you know, I think the big companies have to have that. The little companies would want to have that, but they can make it without. So, you know, figure out where, where we're at, you know, and I'm sure we'll pay a chat probably, I'm not sure to say. But, but, you know, the reality of us, living the caterpillar, would seem to be significantly less than helping John expand. And this John expand and, and, you know, I think that's more of a reality.
I think tourism, we have to accept, it, it's our number one dollar. If you look at research, a hundred forty-one million grown in in two thousand thirteen.
Someone...
Lord, mercy, you can't ignore those type of things.
You know, we've got plenty of, like, foggy, dry issues, you know, I know we're, we're probably not all happy with everything that goes on in our local community, but when you look at Macon County, and you go down and look at some of the other counties, look at, you know, crime and, and other things, I think you got some... That's, that's something I think we need to be, you know, promoting, probably more than we are. Uh, national forest land, you know, I know that, that's two head shore, fifty percent of the land devoted to forest service, you know, our pasture revenues not exist, or maybe a little bit of lumber, or logging, or wood sales, or something like that, you know, but, uh, it also preserves the quality of life, you know. If you get the right person, so...
If you're being fore-sightful, I think we need to look to the fact that agriculture is, there's a good chance it's gonna become more decentralized in the future. Uh, there's huge growth in local food movement, there's good reasons for that, and Macon County should be looking to, uh, helping protect and promote agriculture for the future.
You wanna talk about that, Bill?
Joe's wife would...
He'd use some help too, if we'd like to help Joe.
It's just, I'm just Macon County, if you look at the surrounding counties around us, and you look at the agriculture that's today or now, versus basically ten years ago, uh, and, I mean, even today, folks are out there building fences around stuff, at, at Catalon, huge, uh, and, and folks are, are killing smaller plots.
I think there's, you found the interest in gardening, I always despised it when I was a kid growing up. There's a lot of people who, you know, that's become a, it's like playing golf or, or desperate hobby.
And they're, you know, they're, they're doing some economics there, they're not, they're not canning beans and corns, they're taking it to the market, you know. They're not, they're not raising cattle because they're cute, they're raising, cause they can take it to market, so... And I think, you know, I think we're, we're, you know, agriculture's a huge economic engine for North Carolina, and I think it's, it's one, so, like, Macon County, Canada, moving forward is a costly choice.
I'm the coordinator of the small product market in county community, we do not have any meat in our market, we do not have any dairy products in our market. We need more agricultural vendors in our market, uh, and markets, you know, people will come.
I think there is a demand there.
Yeah, there is a demand.
Your chickens don't have antibiotics and steroids. No chickens have hormones. I don't think so either. Chicken and pork, poultry, poultry and pork, it's already, they will get that straight enough.
It's already what?
It's, and they're not allowed to feed hormones from poultry or slime, beef is only, and that's estrogen, that's that feeding to help in the feed conversion. You get a thousand times more estrogen from your serving of asparagus than you do from the beef, the chicken, and supplement with it too. I haven't learned there, basically said, we'll make them say it again, but properly educated, John.
Oh, this is great, Grant.
There's a lot of opportunities.
I know one thing, Ben said, I think we definitely wanna, you know, plant our economic development, but we also need to remember our rural communities and remember our tourism, and it's being impactful, and that's one of the, uh, studies that's... That's just one possible industry that can be addressed here.
Okay, Tuesday night. Yes, Mr. Jares?
I want to thank you guys, you put a lot of hours and time into this, and I know, I would sleep better, and I know our wonderful sheriff will sleep better when this all comes to land. So I just trust in the Lord that he'll press upon the board to, uh, get this passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we need to set?
No, we're gonna cancel what we done to, to next week's, first evening.
So it's canceled next week's regular meeting? Resess this one? Settle our next regular meeting?
Or...
We got a few guys aside, holiday there five, seven days every week.
So our next regular meeting will be March nineteenth? Four o'clock, right here.